Okay, I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting of November 15th. This has not been a palace coup for any of you that are particularly paranoid. It's not Al Haig either after Reagan got shot, but Jen isn't able to be here tonight, so she asked me to run the meeting. Are you have before you an agenda? Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. Presentations, discussions of issues of interest to the committee. This is going to be fun. And we're going to have John Buckey present the 2017 John and Abigail Adams Scholars.
So unlike the dropout report and maybe even the school improvement plan report, this is one of my more enjoyable presentations to the school committee. I have 29 students who have been named John and Abigail Adams Scholars. And if you recall, that's based on their MCAS scores in biology, English language arts, and math. And as a result of their achievement, if they decide to go to a public college or university in Massachusetts, they can do so tuition-free. So what we will do is we will have the students line up here along the rail behind me, and I've told them this is their 15 seconds of fame with the school committee and just to share a little bit with you about their intentions for next year, whether they're going to take a gap year, maybe consider the military, take advantage of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Some of them know exactly what they want to do for next year. Some of them have kind of an idea, and some of them have no idea. And all three of those are perfectly acceptable, so.
Absolutely.
I will turn, and the first student behind me, Ms. Ringer, will share with you a little bit.
All right. My name's Kristy Ringer. I hope to go to school, college, somewhere. Not New England.
My top choice right now is Elon University in North Carolina.
Excellent.
And I don't know what I'm going to study.
Perfect.
My name is Lauren Brissette. I think I'm definitely going to go into college next year. I do not have a top choice school, and I have undecided major.
I am thinking, oh, I'm Harrison Holgate, and I'm actually, my top school is Brown, and I'm thinking of going to law, but I'm also looking at UChicago.
I'm Jackson Almedovar. I'm looking at a few small to middle-sized colleges in the New England area. I'm undecided on what I want to study, but I'm just thinking of doing something this next year. I want to talk.
I'm Matthew Davidson. First choice right now is UMass Amherst. I'm looking to study electrical engineering.
I'm Matthew Allen. I don't know what I want to do next four years, but I applied early action to UMass Amherst, although it's other schools. So.
My name is Grace Bartlett. I'm an environmental student studying environmental science or film, and I applied early action to UMass Amherst.
My name's Brandon Young. I want to go to college next year. My top choice is Georgetown, and I'll study business.
I'm April Hyberg. My top choice is media and journalism. I don't know what I'm going to do.
My name is Shay Albertson. I'm looking to go to a liberal arts school. My top choice is Colgate University, and I'm looking to study environmental studies or environmental economics.
My name is Diana Harren. I'm currently on the start of what I want to study, but I definitely want to start somewhere in the future. And I'm hoping to study education, education, and my top choice is environmental.
My name is Megan Muncher. I applied to UMass Florida and I'm going to study international work. So I am hoping to study chemistry. I'm looking at college in Boston.
Excellent. Quite a group we have. And among them, a couple that the scholarship will pay dividends for them.
Absolutely.
So part of the agreement is, I told them they do not have to stay for the entire school committee meeting. Do you have any questions?
No, just to congratulate you all for your achievement. It's wonderful, and I really appreciate you taking the time and telling us where you're looking and some of your considerations. And as Dr. Buckey said before, it's perfectly fine if you don't know what you want to go and study to begin with, but congratulations to you.
We are so proud of you.
No, so proud. Congratulations. And there goes the entire room. You really know how to clean out a room, Jen. Yeah.
Is this something I said?
Yeah.
There goes our audience.
Yeah.
You have to come out on a wet night. Wish you could stay.
I think some of you have to come over here now.
We're tilting to the right. Well, I think that that's a very nice reflection on the quality of kids we have and the quality of the teaching in the school that we have.
Absolutely.
So we're going to move on to the dismal science, Martin. Do you want to tell us about the budget forecast?
Good evening.
Evening.
Hi.
This is our yearly, we call it roll forward number. We have done this preliminary forecast at this point, where we would be if we move existing personnel and expenses into FY18. And the number you see in front of you, 523-195, is the number that we've come up with. Now, I want to make two or three points. The expense line of 202-294 includes two expenses that we expect to increase. One of them is the special education tuition line due to a almost $200,000 decrease in the circuit breaker that we usually get every year. And the other amount, 102-294, is operating expenses that relate to the new intermediary school building. Those are mostly utilities, supplies, some repair and maintenance. We've had to adjust these lines to reflect the fact that we'll have another building and we'll be responsible to cover these expenses. The 320-901 payroll is again in accordance with the scales and negotiated contracts. We're moving existing payroll and salaries into FY18, and this is the amount we see right now.
Now, I will interject if I may. This includes negotiated agreements with teaching assistants, educator support personnel, and custodians, which have been already determined. It does not include any negotiated agreement with the teachers' unit of NTA. So that would be on top of that roll forward figure. It also does not include new staff for the intermediate school. And to your question earlier, Melissa, on that, right now, we anticipate that the new staff requests would be in the range of $550,000 on top of this roll forward figure. That would include, because this will maybe be your next question, what positions? The position of a principal, we do not need to add an assistant principal because there are two at the elementary school. One will go over to the intermediate school. It includes the addition of a school nurse. It includes the addition of a librarian. And it includes a guidance counselor, which we would anticipate would be split between the primary and intermediate school. So they would each have one and a half. We'd go from two guidance counselors serving that population to three guidance counselors next year, serving that population. Are there other requests that, you know, we would like? Certainly. And a lot depends, of course, on the appropriation that we receive from the town of Nantucket. When we have that appropriation, we'll be able to better determine if we can have all of these positions and even add some other things that we would like to add. When we get into the presentations by school, it'll probably be a more appropriate time to talk about staffing. One of the projects that we've already begun, and it's still in very much a draft form, is to take the faculty at NES and split it into the faculty at NES and the faculty at NIS. And so that's going on now. It's certainly not a finished product, but we wanted to do that so that we would make absolutely sure we weren't missing a critical piece as we divide those two schools.
I have two questions. Martin, could you just explain the breakdown the way you did in the 202-294? Again, I don't think I quite captured it right. You said that it was a special tuition line. We were going to see a decrease of what amount?
Increase of $100,000.
Increase.
Of $100,000 due to the fact that the circuit breaker that we usually get every year through offset tuition costs.
Okay.
Is decreasing for FY18 by almost $200,000.
Okay. And then, so then, the other 102-294 were the increased facility costs that we could expect?
Yes, for the new building.
Okay.
As Mike mentioned, Superintendent Cosworth mentioned, it doesn't include any new personnel.
New personnel. And then, my second question is, how do we manage the cafeteria at NIS and that projection or potential impact on the budget?
So let me answer that, but let me, I think I skipped that the facilities staff is in that $550,000 that's rolling forward as well. I apologize for that. We actually had a meeting today with our Chartwell's representatives. We have to go back out for, write an RFP for a new proposal. Our contract is up, and so that will factor into costs. We know that we're, while we're serving the same number of students, we're opening another kitchen. And so we expect that that will be factored in by anybody who makes a proposal to run our food services as we go forward. The object of any food service program is to try to run it slightly in the black. You don't want it to be too much in the positive because then maybe you're charging too much. But you don't want it to run in the negative either because then it has to be supported by the operating budget. So they will factor that in as companies make proposals, and we'll see, you know, see where that brings us.
Great. Thank you.
Zona? What percentage of the, did the circuit breaker go down compared to last year?
It went from roughly 445, 740 to 255, 560. So percentage-wise, it's almost, it's less than 50, but it's about 40, 45%.
That's something that when Nancy gives her budget, she will explain. You may remember that every year, I do a slide showing what's the appropriation plus what's the circuit breaker equals the amount that we expect to have to pay in tuition in a particular year. So quite frankly, it wasn't good news that we have a decrease in circuit breaker in a year that we know we're going to have new staffing costs. But there is, we believe, an avenue to create a fund to take care of unexpected residential tuition costs. And it's something that New Hampshire used to allow, some people will call it a rainy day fund or, yeah, contingency.
Stabilization.
I think stabilization fund is what Massachusetts is calling it. What it does is it allows you to maybe take your surplus at the end of the year and start building that stabilization fund for the unexpected student that moves into your district that could cost anywhere from $50,000 to $200,000 for a tuition cost. And that will help us if we can begin to build up that stabilization fund.
Is that something that's always been available, or is that?
No, no. This is something new, and I think that they've seen, there's been an outcry by many districts because when you get somebody moving in, particularly from out of state, it's a cost that you could not have anticipated, and you would have to take money from other operating line items to account for that. So it's been a necessary move, and we're trying to position ourselves to establish it.
Just another question on the circuit breaker. Do we know if, was this a cut to the statewide percentage-wise to schools, or have you?
It's based on a formula, and I don't know if you want to speak to it, or Nancy, or whether you want to wait until we provide it, but it's based on your catastrophic costs. It's pretty.
If it's going to be part of Nancy's.
Yeah, I think it would probably be best to wait, and then she could explain it.
I'm just curious as to why we had such a catastrophic cut.
Well, you may remember, it's not unusual for that to roller coast a little bit. And we, I think probably six years ago, I'd have to look at the chart, it was probably $155,000, and then crept up to $450,000, and now, you know, is going, sliding back a little bit. But it's based on your previous year's costs.
I believe the percentage is 73% claims, reimbursable claims. What these claims, how they're classified is reimbursable, probably Nancy would be better answering that question, but that's my research.
Thank you.
Okay. Zona, do you have any question?
Okay.
Okay. Preliminary budget for federal grants. I think probably we can both speak to this. We tried to give you what the grants were last year compared to what they're going to be in the coming year. You can see that they have actually gone up just slightly. Our IDEA grant has pretty much been in the high $200,000 to $300,000 for years, and Title I is held pretty steady. And then some of the other grants have changed a little bit. Just to give you a reference point, though, I was looking today, in 2011, our federal grants were $685,921.
I was going to ask.
So, you know, over time, it's gone down. Some entitlement grants increase slightly, some decrease slightly, some have even gone away. Most of us can remember Title IV, which was safe and drug-free schools. And that money completely went away, which for most of us is counterintuitive when the problem's increasing. But that's the federal government at work. These are what we call entitlement grants. They're not competitive grants. As long as we file properly, that is money that we are entitled to. And generally, I think the school committee knows that IDEA is the special education grant. That's the largest grant, one of the largest grants that we have. It pays for things like some evaluators, landmark consultation, or in the old days, the Walker consultation was in that. Maybe in some crisis counseling. And then there's some travel in there, and sometimes there's an offset for some of our staff in that money. The Title I grant is federal support, and it's based on our free and reduced lunch figures. And most of that grant goes to offset one of the salaries of a reading teacher at NES. And then there's some tutoring, MCAS tutoring that's in that grant as well, and some supplies. Title II grant is improving teacher quality and training, and most of that money now goes to our mentoring program. And in fact, in recent years, it hasn't been enough to pay for all of our mentoring because we've had quite a few new faculty. And let's see, Title III is one grant that has been growing, and you've heard Jeremiah Splain report on that in the past. That's the English language learners, and that is based on our population. And so that has grown from nothing, probably three, four years ago, maybe Jeremiah, four years ago, to, you know, single digits, just supply money, and it has now hit the $40,000 amount. And then there are some other smaller sped improvement grants and preschool grants that make up the rest of those funds.
No. Or is there more money for Title III?
Zona? What was the percentage of free and reduced? I forget.
Over 30% this year, this year, the first quarter. It's held steady from, I just received today the October performance of the program, and it's holding steady.
Thirty, three zero.
Yeah.
I remember when it was eight percent.
Yeah.
Wow.
Last year, if you remember, it held, for my four-quarter presentation, it was between 20 and 23%. So this year, it was a drastic increase just in the first quarter.
And I think we said in the food service report, what, a month ago, that's something that we've always felt was too low for our population, and we needed to get the word out. We needed to make community members feel comfortable enough to apply for money that would help them, you know, mitigate some financial hardship. So I think we've done a good job. I give Linda Peterson, Chartwell's, probably Patricia Harding, and Eileen, and a lot of people reaching out, trying to get community members hooked into that.
Tim, I do have one question. Mike, do we have the budget presentation dates of when we go to, or when we go to FinCom and all of that?
Well, we don't. We know that on December 6, we're going to be presenting technology facilities and community schools, so that's our next meeting. And then the 20th, we'll have the schools and central office present. We did hear this week from the head of FinCom that they are considering a Saturday in late January. Am I correct?
They want to move every, they're moving budget meetings in January, and David Ward, the chairman, called yesterday. We discussed it with Mike. We told them we would accommodate whatever they want if they wanted to go on Saturday. They are still considering doing it for the school in the week. So we don't know at this point which date, but we usually present the first week of February. And he said that they want to be done with all budget discussions by the end of January. So I said, I leave it up to you. Just give us an idea of when, and they'll get back to us. He said it's probably going to be the last week of January.
Okay.
So we can have time to have the public hearing of the budget.
So we do the public hearing first and then go.
We said we would have no problem making that if they gave us all that we want.
And I'm sure they said that's fine. And the next budget ad hoc meeting, is that scheduled?
It is, and it's coming up.
Is it on the horizon?
November 29. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Martin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Comments from the public? Saying none. We'll move on to committee discussion votes to be taken. First, a vote to approve the donation from Egan Maritime Institute to CPS in the amount of $27,105.
The queues from this vote, the question to approve?
Second.
Discussion.
Sure.
When Egan Maritime donates or gives this money, do they designate what it's to be used for?
Yes, they do.
So do we see that here? I apologize, I didn't.
No, that's okay. That's a good question. That's to support the position of maritime studies at the eighth grade at the Cyrus Pierce School. And they've been doing that now for, subsidizing that for four years. But it's very specific.
So is it every time they donate, that's what, that's the program we're supposed to go for, or is this specifically for this one?
Most of the time, it's for that, but there are some other Egan donations that are for field trips, and they usually are specified, I think, for that.
Is that something in the future, maybe you could add so we have it here? I'm just curious.
Sure.
It helps me understand.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
The motions have been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Vote of approval for nature's classroom overnight trip for NES fifth grade.
Oh, sorry.
June 5th, 6th, and 7th, 2016.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty seven.
November 1st, 2016, meeting minutes.
Oh, motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm sorry, is it November 1st or November 15? It's a November 15th on the top on the agenda, it says November 1st. I think we're approving November 15th meeting minutes.
Yeah.
It is November 15th.
Yeah, but it's the first.
It's already?
So we'll fix the date.
So November 1st? Okay, perfect.
Okay.
We'll fix which date?
On the minutes.
The minutes.
Because it clearly can't be today's minute.
And actually.
I sent an email to all of you about that.
Yep, yep. You did.
And actually, just as a, the date of the trip, Sierra pointed it out, for the field trip is, should be June 5th through 7th, 2017, because 2016 already happened.
You are right.
So. Good call, speaking up.
Okay.
Move approval. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Zona, you look quizzical.
You know, I always have the question, and I'm just going to put it out there. The transfer between departments. We do a lot of that. Is there a way around it? I mean, typically, what I've seen, and this is me witnessing it, I've seen a transfer between different departments, and then I see transfers within a department that, I see from math to English, and then I see from English to math. So that confuses me. Why is it a transfer within the same department? If you have funds in math, but it may be in technology and maybe somewhere else, why wouldn't you transfer between the department?
So I'll give you some examples, and you're right, and we've said this before, we need to cut down on the number of transfers. And Martin has been meeting religiously and with a whip to make that point to all of the departments and principals. That said, there will always be some transfers, and I would like to think that most of them will. will come, you know, March, April, May, because that's when you start to find money still available that can be moved. But I'll give you an example. It's not unusual for a department, say, in the high school, to say, you know what, we're not buying PE books this year. And so, John will say, okay, now I know that I have that money available for another department that needs math books. So, sometimes you'll find that. I don't know if the principals want to speak and give other examples, but that would be one thing that would come to my mind. Yeah, obviously.
I think that's a good explanation, and I don't think you need to expand on it, except for, I will say this, when I've had to do transfers or sign up on transfers, it would be good to have that background, you know? It just makes it a little bit more comfortable for me to approve a transfer.
Right.
Because otherwise, I feel like not enough thought has gone into it because I don't know. Okay? So, I'll just leave it with that comment. Thank you, though.
Okay, so, we've had a bit of a vote. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Superintendent's report.
A couple of things. I have provided for you the first draft of the enrollment projections. If you've had a chance to look at it, up above, you'll see our October, and you'll see that I've sort of rolled forward some of those numbers, and I've added the intermediate school for the coming year. It is not an exact science, and it is not a matter of strictly rolling forward the numbers from first grade to the second grade for the next year, because there are certain grades that historically see an increase. For example, first grade is one of those in the elementary school that might see an additional five to 10 students, I'd say roughly, excuse me. Occasionally, sixth grade could be a place where students would come into the middle school, and certainly ninth grade, as the private school students join, our eighth grade is a number that we usually see increases of 10 to 15, and that depends on the year. So, you won't see an exact roll forward. I always find it interesting to go, when we get our October enrollments the next year, to see how close the projections were. But these change, I'll do this two or three times before we're done with it, but it gives us a ballpark. You can see the yellow highlighted area are completely unknowns. We really don't know what that preschool number will be or the kindergarten number will be yet. We keep pushing that envelope earlier and earlier every year. But as you know, whatever the number is in February is often not the number that we find in September. So, it's a scientific guess.
It is just lovely. I'm sitting here smiling, I just want to make the comment, it's lovely to see 350 students projected at Nantucket Elementary School down from 717. I just, I think, you know, now we can stop having classes in closets and hallways, and I think there's a lot to be proud of in just recognizing that number. So, I'm thrilled. It's making me actually smile.
Thank you, Melissa. I agree. On the horizon, we're in pretty good shape. As I mentioned earlier, we have some budget presentations next month. We'll also, I don't know if we'll have any field trip requests for the music competitions, but sometimes we do, and Kim has asked for an opportunity for her staff to talk a little bit about responsive classroom. Several of them have been to a conference, so that will be probably upfront at the December 6th meeting. And we, I'm not sure about the Sparks Road-Bartlett Road. I haven't heard back from some town officials. I've asked if they were still planning on speaking, so we'll wait and see whether that happens or not. I would not be likely to put that on the December 20th, because that's a lot of budget presentations on December 20th. And then, just to let you know, the, we're trying to set up a, our first meeting of the Student Dress Committee, and we're looking at, after the Thanksgiving break, we thought that we would put together the committee to meet before we determined what path that group is going to take. And I've given a couple of dates to people, and they're getting back to us. And then, finally, it's not on my report, but just wanted to share, I had a nice email from Carol Keaton, and she wanted me to mention a very generous donation of tennis balls that we have received. Not tennis balls for physical education use, but to put on the bottom of chairs to keep it quieter from the third floor to the second or second to the first. And she told me that we have, I think, I think she estimated somewhere around 1,000 tennis balls, and the Nantucket Yacht Club, and Westmore Tennis Club, and the community tennis courts at the Jetties, and the Tennis Loft, and Great Harbor Tennis Courts have all contributed to that, and she's been working. I know that she's done the majority of the classrooms, and she still has, I think, 400 tennis balls. So, thank you to Carol, and thank you to all of those people who are contributing. I guess that's it.
Okay, any subcommittee reports, layers on reports, students?
Yeah, so we had our student council meeting today, and we are looking for dates on the school calendar to plan a dodgeball tournament. It's still, like, trying to figure out what those days are. And we are submitting approvals for different fundraisers that we're planning on doing for the winter formal to, like, keep ticket costs down for students, because students need their low ticket prices. But, yeah, that's what we're doing.
Do you have an update on the winter formal?
We've gotten a couple locations, and we've heard back from them, and we're just trying to figure out what the best spot would be. Just trying to figure it out.
And do you have a month that you're looking at?
Yes. Yeah, the projected date is December 17th.
Oh, December 17th, so soon.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so we're going to lock that down in the next week, I hope.
And how will you reach out to chaperones or who's...
We are, we are asking teachers if they would like to chaperone, and yes or no. They're just, a lot of them are, like, really into it. I asked a couple today.
Really into chaperone?
Yeah, and some of them are like, oh, like, might not want to do that. I'm like, hey, don't worry about it.
It's actually an easier gig, I think, than a middle school dance. I don't know if you would agree with me, Dr. Cohen, but...
Mike, would you like to say something about the soccer team?
Yeah, you know, I think they unfortunately lost in the finals of the sectionals. They had a marvelous year, and while there's always disappointment in losing your last game, I think it's a group that achieved certainly far beyond what I expected, and that's not to, you know, denigrate what they had, but they had lost three defenders and a goalkeeper from last year's team, and even this year, they lost their starting goalkeeper to a terrible injury, and they lost Andrew Dawson, a key midfielder, going into the playoffs. So, I'm very proud of the performance that they gave. The wheels came off a little bit at Cohasset, but that's a really good team, and so they should be proud. I think they were, like, 16, 2, and 1 for the season, so kudos to them. And is there a big game yet to be played, Dr. Leprey?
I will say, the football team did beat Cohasset, okay?
That is true.
They have been a roadblock, though, to us.
Yes, they have.
And on the 26th, we are going to take our revenge.
On Cohasset or someone else?
The Vineyard. We are going to take our revenge, and I hope you all come. We will come back with some scalps, if that's politically correct.
The trophy would be enough, I think.
It's a new trophy, so I think it would look very good out front.
I think so, too.
Okay. Anything else? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.